Your matter, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, with tourism opening up again, we needed to, you know, it's time to address the safety of the public on a county road. That's no, like no other county road. I mean, this is, I think, the only county-owned road that is accessed through a four-wheel drive and is such a... You know, we heard one of the testifiers talk about the road initially being made for pedestrian-type of access, meaning the residents getting out of the valley and bringing their taro to market, and they're right, and for mules, for donkeys, right? So we've got to remember that. The purpose of that road was for the residents and taro farmers. It's their livelihood. This is their home. Unfortunately, I say unfortunately because now it's a public road owned by government, that we have to allow public access. So we're looking at vehicular access and pedestrian access. And one testifier talked about, you know, we should have been doing studies, you know, before this comes. Well, to tell you the truth, since I've been in office in eight years, every single day, we take the statistics of local traffic, rental car traffic, pedestrian, hikers going in, both local and visitor traffic. So, you know, we have had a lot of discussion on road issues as well as the health of the valley itself. And, you know, Councilmember Tim Richards has come on several occasions to some of the meetings because addressing, you know, the health conditions of the animals. You know, the horses were starting to get sick and we trying to find out why. So there's a lot of issues in Waipio. So what we did was we put a working group together because we keep having these community meetings and taking all this information. And before I came into office, for years, they've been trying to deal with this and come up with some type of solution. And there's not just one solution, there's many, many things happening in the valley that we have to address. Now, so the working group, right now, we have our police captain from Hamakua on that group. We have research and development on the, with that group. DPW, which is our Department of Public Works. Parks and Rec, because our ranger program is there, that's the park and rec employees. We have the mayor's office on, we have corp counsel, of course, because everything we do, you know, we have to keep in mind the legality of all, of how we move forward and what is allowed and what is not allowed. We have from the Waipio Tarot Farmers Association, the president and some of the members. And we have Ha'ola O Waipio. The men of Pa'ah, we included them, they're not from a group from the Waipio area, but they're in the Puna area. But a lot of their service, and some of their people have a family and they work the lois down there. They've been going down and helping volunteer in the valley for cleanup or whatever that needs to be done in the valley. So they're on that, this group also because Waipio Valley is not just public access for District One. This is public access for everyone, right? So trying to include everyone. Bishop Museum, of course, because they are one of the big, biggest landowners. And then we have Kamehameha Schools because of the beach area. DLNR, Bob Masuda has been so, you know, wonderful with sitting, sitting on this group in our calls every month. Do Care is involved, Representative Mark Nakashima from the state level. And then we included Department of Agriculture as well because of farming. So at the next meeting, they said we're going to have the Hawaii Tourism Association because we did have Ross Birch on, we're bringing him back on again. We were working with the rental companies and to see how we can minimize the traffic going down into the valley because the rental agreements already says that they should not be taking the rental cars into the valley. That is one of the restrictions. But there's no enforcement. So that is what we're trying to work on with the rental companies. How can we enforce that? Can we, can they put a fine on it or whatever? But they've had several occasions where rental vehicles have gone down. They weren't familiar with the valley. If you've seen some pictures on social media, it was immersed in water. So the amount of money that the tourists paid on that, I can only imagine. So there's, you know, it's so difficult because a lot of them don't speak English as well. So they don't understand when the ranger or educational officer is trying to explain to them how to traverse that road, that you gotta give, the upcoming traffic has a right-of-way, so you gotta pull out on the pullout. The problem there is we have so much traffic going in and out and so many hikers. When I went down with Dardi Gamaio and, I don't know if it was corp counsel that time, a couple of years ago, and we were going down, hikers were going down, hikers were coming up, people were on the, where the guardrails are and on the valley wall. And when we went down, we needed to pull aside because a car, a truck was coming up. All of those tourists jumped over the guardrail to get out of the way of the vehicle. Now, that is real dangerous. The other tourist that was walking was on the wall. And they tell the tourists, don't walk on the wall because if a vehicle loses the brakes, the first place they're gonna go is they're gonna go for the wall. But there's no control of that. And, you know, just last month, we had someone lose brakes and they went into the wall. And I think they tumbled, I think it turned over too, and luckily, no one was killed. And luckily, we had the COVID thing out and the restrictions, so you didn't have much hikers at all. I think it was none at that point. I gotta look at the statistics, but we do have statistics. So I want to go back to in January, before COVID hit and we had the closure of, you know, the stay-home orders and all of that. You know, on a busy day, we would have over 300 rental vehicles going into the valley. That is not including the local traffic. So, and you can get these statistics, we have them back for years, right? Since I've been in office and maybe even before that. And then we had, on that same day, we had, I think it was between 150 to 200-plus hikers per day that week, that, when I was looking in the month of January. So it's a recipe for disaster, you know? And then here, the, I heard one of the testifiers say, we need to walk. I went to the back or the top of the, whatever. How do you get there when it's all private property? So the owners of the valley, the residents, are complaining that there are so much trespassing going on in the valley and crossing to their property. I've had pictures that were sent to me of people who were defecating in the valley. I mean, it was gross pictures, but where are they going? You have, in one day, you have 300 vehicles, then you have 200-plus hikers. Don't tell me that those hikers gonna hike down and they don't have to urinate or defecate somewhere, right? If they go to the beach, they may be lucky enough to get into a restroom or a portable toilet that is not full. So a lot of times, they don't even use the portable toilets. They use the bushes in the area around the beach area or go in the water. So the Tarot Farmers Association, Ha'ola O Waipio, and a lot of community, the residents and taro farmers are asking for some type of regulation and also a study on the road. So Department, our DPW had hired a geotech and environmental engineer, engineering firm. And right now, they're assessing, you know, the carrying capacity of the road and if there is any undermining of the road because of, you know, the storms we've been having. And we don't know what the carrying capacity is. That report is supposed to come back in mid-December, according to David at DPW. So, you know, I respect the testifiers. And one of the good things about bringing it to council is that it opens it up to the broader public. So I appreciate, I truly appreciate the testifiers coming to testify about, you know, using the road for exercise, which I totally disagree with because that road is not to use for exercise. This is for the livelihood of the people of the valley. And yes, they want to welcome visitors, but at what cost? You know, are they gonna lose their cultural heritage? You know, what are we doing? But back to bringing it to council, this is a way that we can discuss it as representatives for each district on this island without violating the Sunshine Law. And I would encourage the constituents of each district to contact their council members if they cannot make testimony or, you know, whether it be written or via webex. And share your concerns because Waipio is for everyone to enjoy. But the one thing we need to remember again, and I'm gonna keep saying this, we have to keep in mind the residents who have been there for generations and our taro farmers, this is their livelihood. Not all of the taro farmers live in the valley. They live in other districts as well. So I, my intention today is to keep it at the committee level till we can get more public input from the entire island. And then, and concerns that they may come up with because they're going, well, you know, in Honolulu, they get, they restrict how many cars go down and blah, blah, blah. And we looked all, we looked into that. We looked into why that is allowed on Oahu and some areas and why you couldn't, we couldn't do it in Waipio. And correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, but it's because, you know, some of the areas in, like Honolulu, has a different protection. What is it called? Yeah, Joe, can you come up for a little bit? Because the reason why I need you to explain that too is we have people watching this and the public needs to, the broader public needs to understand the things that we've already tried to do with restricting traffic. And we're gonna try and, we're looking into a permitting system as well for the vehicular access, but we're working at one thing at a time. But Joe, it was a special management area or what was it called? Why, the difference?
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the, of the board, Joseph Camillamela, Corp Counsel. Anyway, so, yeah, so some of the areas that we looked at, you know, they had created a special management area. And so we, we had looked into that as, as a one way in which to help regulate what needs to be regulated to ensure the safety of not only the residents, but visitors and people utilizing the road. So, but to actually do a management area can take a very long time. For example, I've seen Lake Kauai and some other parts of the state, you know, it'd take decades sometimes just to create. You know, taking decades is kind of too long to resolve a safety issue that has to be addressed. But it's a safety issue that has existed for over 30 years now. You know, there has been a death on the road over 30 years ago that people don't really remember. So, so what we had before this council now is just one of the ways to help regulate what we can because there are other things that we are considering and which council member Val Poindexter had talked about, which is a study being done by Public Works as to, you know, what's the carrying capacity. That's an, that's an important issue because it goes to, if there's a necessity to do certain things, it's good that we try to get a handle on all of it now rather than risk the possibility of a collapse of the road. That's what the study is for, it's a geotech study.
Right, thank you, thank you, Joe. And yeah, when we talk about the collapse of the road, if we wait till that happens, then we've destroyed the lives of so many people down in that valley and their livelihood. You know, so while we're working on this pedestrian access, simultaneously, we're working on other issues, you know? Some things that is beyond our control as a county with the health and environment of the valley floor itself because we only own the road. And for the testifier that was concerned about Waimano campers, and then I got a message from Charlie Heal, oh, okay. One of the attorneys saying about the access rights, gathering rights. And we're working on that. So with RND, this working group is just a wonderful working group, talked about what are the options for people who have, don't have a vehicle away into the valley if they need to gather food. So we're working with RND to see if, you know, we would be able to contract out some type of shuttle service. A testifier said, hey, we gotta start charging, you know, we have a lot of tourists, start charging and make money and it's not about that. You know, what we want to do is protect the cultural heritage of that valley to be able to share it for generations to come. We don't want to over, don't have over-tourism and kill that cultural heritage and collapse that road. I mean, we need to take action now to provide safety, not only for the people of the valley, the residents, taro farmers, but for the entire public. So I'll yield at this time and want to hear from my colleagues before I ask for a post-bulman. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Poindexter, and really providing all of the background on all of this because it's a short bill, but there's a big story behind it. So with that, I'm gonna ask anyone in Kona. Any comments, input? Okay, back in.
Sure, yes, sorry. We're just looking at each other for who's gonna go first.
Ms. Viegas?
Yes, please, thank you. You know, this immediately brought to mind the organization that worked in Kauai and Hana. After the flooding there, it was an opportunity for a pause for that area. And they took the initiative at that time to really put into place a transformative management practice for that area that still to this day is fairly mind-blowing, what they were able to accomplish and the model that they were able to put into effect. And I am hopeful, in fact, they won an international award for what they did and how they did it, Indigenous Peoples Award. And I'm hopeful that as this conversation continues, that there may be opportunities to, I'd love to reach out to the group, talk to them about how they did it, what they did, what it entailed, and just how we can implement better management practices for our areas that tend to be inundated with visitors who, I mean, who can blame them? Waipio Valley is one of the gems of this island. But how we can actually take steps to follow in their leadership model for the potential of managing this area. Waipio, I've always held very close to my heart, but have also seen some of the kind of tragic degradation of, kind of like the tragedy of the commons when nobody really knows who's specifically responsible for it. I also, most recently, was able to watch a film called Public Trust, and it focused on public trust lands and having access to open spaces and lands for people to traverse, explore and navigate, and the importance of that for all of us. So navigating our way to a balance, I think, is gonna be the goal. Thank you, Val, for bringing up this conversation and also for your sensitivity and not trying to just rush it through, but for allowing the conversations to continue around this as we enter a new term, which you will be deeply missed. But I just wanted to throw that out there as a potential way to collaborate and connect with what was done on Kauai. And it's been award-winning and precedent-setting. And I think there's real opportunity for us to navigate a similar path for resolutions and solutions for what's happening in Waipio. I yield.
Thank you, Ms. Viegas. Anyone else in Kona? Because I have Mr. Richards. Oh, go ahead, Ms. Eoff.
Leah, you know, this is the, this is the member David.
Oh, go ahead, Ms. David.
Thank you. And I would like to actually also thank Val Poindexter for raising this issue, which has been a longstanding concern of residents of Waipio as well as it is an island-wide issue and concern. And I also respect the fact that she recognizes and I thank the testifiers for bringing up issues that surround the access rights and that sort of thing. And I think Waipio is very special and unique in as much as what its traditional historic uses were back in the day. And like anything else, the economy, tourism growth and just going through the changes in a community has brought rise to a lot of the concerns that she raises, not only for Waipio, but I believe for the entire island of this, of Waipio. But what I also see, and I think it's very appropriately, the time, the timing is appropriate, is the fact that the comparison of what is being proposed here and because of what has been going on. And what we are experiencing now are beaches everywhere on this island and in the state because of COVID. The, it was a, it was a weakening moment for me because of the lockdown and stuff that I, that everyone, I think, witnessed this, that our resources, our ocean resources because of this pandemic, became really alive again without any, any traffic. And I think it was like a wake-up call that if we intend to move forward in this economic rebuilding COVID, I think we have to do it very differently as far as maintaining our economic growth and the overuse of our resources. So Ms. Poindexter, I believe you are on the right path of starting something. I have no idea what would be the actual solution for this, but I think if this made everyone aware of what, of how valuable preserving our natural and cultural resources are, especially on this island. So I would, yes, I do support your intention of keeping this in committee because I would be very interested in hearing the other studies and reports that you are awaiting from departments and agencies. So I thank you for the foresight in holding it back in committee. And that's, I think, with that, I'll yield and say mahalo to you again. Aloha.
Mahalo nui, Ms. David. Ms. Eoff? Okay, with that, I have Mr. Richards.
Thank you, Chair. And Val, yeah, thanks for bringing the conversation forward. You're right, I've spent a bunch of time down in that valley and I know that, that road quite well. And, you know, again, listening to all sides of the conversation, there is a very large concern. And interesting, the conversations about the access points, designation of the road today, trail previously. I've always been curious about the construction of that road because I cannot imagine walking a bulldozer down that road, but someone did. I agree also that being very sensitive to all sides of this, you know? And, you know, we've talked story with the taro farmers. You and I have worked on the issues down there, the whole horse issue, concerns for that. And I hear you with all that, balancing the free access down there, balancing that against the tourism side and the tourism impact side. And I, I appreciate the fact that you want to kind of pump the brakes a little bit on this one. Every pun intended for that, that road because it's not quite ready for prime time yet, but it's close. And I think those conversations going forward, I'm very happy to participate in them. The taro farmers are growing down there and terrific. We don't have enough taro being raised on this island. I think we are, I don't know, under 70 acres total statewide, I think, in Loi. So there's plenty of potential down there. But we have to be sure that people can have the access, that they are entitled to getting down there. But it is private lands. So there's a lot of work to get done on this. And I'm very, very happy to work on this because I've, how are we gonna manage Waipio and what's it gonna look like in 2060, 2070? Not just today, not 10 years from now. So I like the fact that we're having this conversation now. I know of, I think there were three accidents this last year that happened there. Thankfully, no fatalities, but that heightens our concern. And it is a county road. It's kind of funny to get down to the back of the valley and you see end of county road. You don't expect to see a sign like that. But to the point, we have a liability thing as a county road that we have to be mindful of. And I know when I've seen people jump over those guardrails when I'm driving up, I'm like, whoa, don't take any steps backwards because it drops. So more work is needed here. I know you're stepping away, but I'm very happy to help pick this up and keep this conversation going. And I was actually trying to look at a map to see if Waipio is District One or District Nine. I'm not sure where it is. It is District One, okay. So anyway, I appreciate you bringing the conversation forward. And we do have a lot of work to do, but people are at the table now. That's what we need to get done. Chair, I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Richards. Ms. Kirkwitz, please.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks, Val, for putting this forward, Waipio's special place. I mean, it's not just a destination or a community resource. It really is a treasure because of its cultural significance. I mean, Kamehameha, you know, had his, he grew up there and he would bring his warriors after battle to refresh and rejuvenate. And so because of that, I think we have to be really heightened and sensitive in how we proceed. I appreciate you bringing this forward. Some folks, friends of mine that are part of Pohaha Ikalani, one of the board members reached out. They do see an issue with folks just trespassing and doing things, as you described, on private land that I don't really want to get into publicly because they're just unsavory acts and it's incredible that people behave in that way. And it's sad because it is a place of cultural significance. And so I just wonder, with a bill like this, because there are mixed feelings about it, you know, does there, is there any discussion around supporting the upper rim lands? Because that is a place where folks are beginning to remove gates, traverse. I mean, there was a massive party there during Labor Day weekend. There's dumping of illegal vehicles. So there's just a lot of, I think, issues that I don't know if our community groups are prepared to deal with should something like this pass. Again, they like the idea of it, but at the same time, you know, what is the holistic strategy to deal with the impacts of something like this? So just some food for thought. I think a management plan similar to what Kauai has done in Hana is something really interesting to explore. And we've got to get community in the driver's seat on this, you know, stewarding the land. I was reading through some of the testimony and something- I was reading through some of the testimony and something interesting I saw was from Dr. Kukahakala. And she put forward the idea of some kind of amendment to ensure that folks that are accessing the valley for educational purposes, and that's what Pohaha Ikalani does, that they be exempt from this. So I hope that's gonna be part of the discussion and maybe an amendment to the bill. I certainly want to make sure our local kids, right, our local residents are able to access the Loi so that they can be educated, they can be empowered and also access being in the land. Because being out there is truly like medicine. You know, you don't have to manipulate nature. It's just beautiful as is. And so I, I just wanted to share that manao. Thanks for bringing the conversation forward and I, I, I'm really excited to see how this kind of unfolds. Chair, I yield.
Thank you, Ms. Kirkwitz. Mr. Kanieli Eklangada.
Thank you, Chair. All right, Val, I think this is good that you brought this forward. You're balancing a few different things, you know, stewardship, public safety and public access. I spoke to one of the testifiers last night and had a nice discussion with them and we touched on different things, you know? What was to be accomplished by this, but also, you know, how to provide access because YPO Valley is a special place and a lot of people want to visit it. And I think really the intent was to block pedestrian access. And a lot of local people go there, but I think most local people go there with a truck and they're ready to get down to the valley via a vehicle. So that, that was something I was thinking about. But two, two different things within, within our county, I really touch on this, which is the Hawaii Strategic Tourism Plan as well as the Aina Aloha Values. Not too many weeks ago, we got an email regarding reopening. And the email was, the content really touched on ho'kepa, which is sharing a kuli'ana between host and visitors. And I think that, that can be easily applied to this situation. Because this is where we have more of a want from our community to express and teach and for visitors to understand what's happening and to understand the place that they're visiting. And I think that word represents, is this a, a good way of, of looking at this situation where the, the YPO community is trying to take a little bit of control over what's happening there. And I, and I appreciate that. And I've been working with a couple of different groups here in Puna and in Hilo. And regarding the same thing. And this, this has really been an outcome of COVID where you have the community wanting to take more control over what's happening in their community at places that are special to everyone, but finding a way of having more input in what's happening and not just being at the whim of terrorism and in all these outside influences. So I really appreciate what you're trying to do here. And I, I support this. I look forward to seeing what happens going forward. And I'm sorry, I won't be here for the, the grand finale, but it just, I think this is a good, a good thing that you're doing here. So mahalo for bringing this forward. And just, just to share a story, I think this is, to me, this explains the significance of YPO Valley. I went surfing there about maybe seven, eight years ago. And we went down early in the morning. And we caught, the morning session was beautiful. About nine or 10 o'clock, we were leaving. As we came up the dirt road, in the middle of the dirt road, underneath the mango trees was a donkey and a hawk sitting in the middle of the road. I couldn't believe it. This is, this, it's kind of unbelievable to see the two different animals sitting in the middle of the road. And they both just sat there. They didn't move. Even as we got within 10, 20 feet and we stopped the truck and we're staring at them and they just stared at us. And then the hawk flew up into the tree. The donkey walked off of the road. And then we proceeded. And it was just, that valley has such a special significance and it's very protected, spiritual. I mean, it touches on everything. So whatever we can do to help preserve that, because you can't, you're not gonna find that feeling or that, that, that specialness in many places anymore. So what you're doing is good. So I appreciate it. And you have my support and mahalo for bringing this forward.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Poindexter.
Yeah, and I'd like to say, yeah, Tim, definitely gonna include you on this group that we meet monthly. You know, because you've been involved already, you know, with a lot of issues down in YPO. And I'd also like to say that, you know, when we talk about the importance of YPO, when you read in history and look at, I took Hawaii politics in college and YPO was where Hawaii politics began. Because Umi Aliloa, who was conceived in O'Kala, in a stream in O'Kala, went to find his father, Chief Liloa in YPO. Because when his mother gave birth to Umi Aliloa, it was told by the chief that if it is a boy, send him to me. So that's what happened. And if we know the history of Umi Aliloa throughout the Hawaii island, but especially on the Hamakua coast, he was the one who created the Ahupoa system. And his mode of governance, I remember in college, I had to choose, who would you want to be like? And I said, Umi Aliloa, because his mode of governance was that the people actually ruled. He just did what was right by the people. He created the Ahupoa system because he knew that from the mountain to the sea, we needed to survive in communities in that way because of the waterways. Yeah, and the survival. He was smart. The guy was brilliant, right? And even Kamehameha wanted to be, rule, and wanted to rule a lot like Umi Aliloa did. So when we talk about the history, it is unbelievable what happened in YPO. There's so much more. But I just wanted to say, when we talk about Hawaii politics, that's where it started, was in YPO Valley. And to all of the residents and taro farmers, you know, my loyalties lie first with you because this is your livelihood and I know what you're trying to protect. And to all of us visitors who don't farm there or who don't live there, you know, I ask that we all respect their views. And, and I ask that they also respect our concerns and our, you know, us giving input to what can make it a great place to share, but not to destroy it. And right now, it's being destroyed because of the people coming into the valley and just, I hate to say this because it just sounds terrible, urinating and defecating all over. And we need to care for that valley because the valley will care for us. And it has for many, many, many years. So I'll yield at this time and thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing this to come onto this committee.
Thank you, Ms. Poindexter. Anyone else? Chair Chung?
Did everybody talk?
Yes.
Okay, sorry I came in late, yeah. But I could see the passion that was being demonstrated by Val on this thing. I know it's a tough issue because, you know, there are some people who objected. But I also do know that you put in a lot of time, you know, meeting with the community and getting a pulse for what was going on. I, I think this really requires a broader discussion. You know, you guys talk about the historical significance of YPO Valley, so very important to all of us. And I think we all know that. I know it's a, a place where people like to go and recreate, right? And it's very important for the tourist industry too. But, you know, at some point, we're gonna have to decide whether, you know, how important that is as a historical area. And maybe just restrict the access to that place. And maybe you go by permit, you allow a certain amount of people to go, you know, per month, per year, or whatever it is. I don't know how you're gonna regulate that, but you kind of just let people go unfettered. And it's, it's a broader, it's a, it's a bigger discussion than whether it's safe for pedestrians or not. It comes down to, you know, what can that valley sustain really? And what's fair and what, what kind of balance do we want to strike? But I do recognize the work that you put into this, Val. Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair Chung. You know, with that, Ms. Poindexter, absolutely, I support all the hard work that's gone into it. It's not an easy solution. And we had one testifier talk about stew, right? And so sometimes when you gotta make stew, gotta cut up the vegetables and shake it up a little bit. But with that, I know you want to put up another motion?
Can I have a motion to postpone to our next committee meeting is on, Clark?
The next committee meeting is January 5th.
Okay, so don't, I think we have one more. Yeah, because I was hoping, oh, my God, and I'll be.
Sorry, November 7 would be the next committee meeting. I'm sorry, I was looking at the 17.
Okay, so a motion to postpone Bill 21, is it 217 to November 17?
Second.
Mr. Clerk, we have a motion to postpone Bill 217 to our November 17 meeting, second by Mr. Richards. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, Mr. Clerk, we have nine ayes.